Special meeting, November second, two thousand and five, at seven oh one.
I'll also call the Board of Directors to order on January second for a special joint meeting at seven oh one also.
So, so the general do a request me to the relations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in principle, with liberty and justice for all.
You just want to go?
Go for it.
Okay, um, I really appreciate all of the board coming together tonight. Um, I had with Jen and Tyler and I had separate conversations with Mr. Ellis, our for select man, Dan Carter, and our board chair about kind of the ongoing, um, uh, needs that we have with our roof projects for, for really three of our schools, Bethel High School, Bethel Middle School, and Berry School. And we thought it might be a good idea before we get deep into the budget cycle. Um, and I just want to start by saying this, this, this is really just for your information at this point. The roof projects have been on the board that's capital plan that for I don't know the last two or three years. Um, so it's not a new item to the capital plan, but we are getting to the point where we really have to have some serious discussions about kind of what our next steps are with, with, uh, with the roof, roofing projects. And the intent tonight is not for to make any decisions necessarily to be made, but really just to give you information and have an opportunity to ask questions so that we can do some first, uh, future planning. So that we're gonna do a really brief presentation tonight. I'm gonna do the part, I'm just really kind of set the purpose for the meeting and talk a little bit about because, um, roof projects like our, like our build, our renovations of our elementary schools are reimbursable by the state of Connecticut. And so, um, that process is quite lengthy. I think some of you know that have been through the HVAC project for the Johnson and Rockwell project. So really, when we talk about working through the state to get reimbursement, we're really talking about a good years long process. At best, uh, we're talking about maybe the summer of twenty twenty six, possibly twenty twenty seven. And well, I, once I kind of go through that process, it might help clarify and understand why that is. So it's really for kind of future planning and then just to understand what the needs are at all the schools and, um, and to, to really start the decision-making process about when we want to tackle what and what and what makes the most sense. So, um, again, our purpose is not to make any decisions tonight, but, um, just kind of go over those things that I just, um, uh, mentioned, including a potential timeline. Um, I'll go over the office of school construction. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about a potential timeline. Uh, uh, Tyler Stevens, for those of you who don't know, he's our, um, new facilities, um, supervisor of facilities and security. He'll go over what the current conditions are. I did want to also mention in front of you, um, there's a couple of different documents that Tyler might be referring to during the course of the meeting. I have emailed these out at different points, but, um, one of the things is there were some updated numbers that were put into this. So this is kind of the consolidation document of everything. And then, um, Jen, of course, will go over the numbers and what we, uh, what we think, uh, potential numbers that we might be talking about. So, before we jump into like the, the, the roofing issues, I did want to say that, that the reinvert, that these projects are reimbursable by the state of Connecticut. So the good news for Bethel is that our reimbursement rate actually went up. When we did the Johnson and Rockwell projects, we were at forty-five percent reimbursement of eligible tenants. Um, I put in front of you and it's linked in the presentation. I believe we're at forty-seven point one, uh, where is it, Jen? Forty-seven, yes. It's about a little more than forty-seven. Yes, forty-seven percent reimbursement. So it's a couple of percentage, uh, points above what it was in the past, which is the good news. So there's two ways, unlike school renovation projects, there's actually two different ways that you can receive reimbursement through the state, through the Office of School Construction. So there's kind of two paths to remember that. The first path is, um, what we did for the Johnson and Rockwell projects is that you actually get authorization from the Connecticut General Assembly and you're placed on something called a priority list. And in that process, um, that the, the actual federal assembly votes about what, where funding will be directed into what towns and communities and what projects will be funded over the course of the year. That has a very specific timeline. So in that scenario, you actually have, um, so in that process, you actually have to apply by June thirtieth. Um, and you have to have a certain number of commitments, which I'm gonna go over in a minute. Um, but one of those things that, that you have to have is you have to have authorization of funding from your local community. So for us in Bethel, that means we've actually had to hold a referendum as, as part of the application process to show, which we've done in the past. We did it for the HVAC project and we did it for, we, we are doing it, um, we did it for the Johnson and Rockwell project. But there's a second path, um, and you're gonna ask me, which path is the best path? And, uh, so I emailed DAS anticipating that question. Um, the second path is you can actually apply directly to the Department of Administrative Services. So you're not held to that timeline where everything has to be done by June thirtieth in that application. Um, Ella Sun, who is, um, one of the associate commissioners for the Department, uh, Department of Administrative Services, DAS, that oversees the Office of School Construction, basically told me in an email that you can, you can apply any month. You just have to apply by a certain date in the month, um, to do that, which gives the town more flexibility. So unlike a big school renovation, it's, it's, it seems like a much similar process. And I said to her, well, what's preferred? Like, is there a preference or is there a concern that you might not get funding if you don't get on the priority list? And she said, no, that it's common, and I conferred with one of my colleagues across, across the region who have done roofing projects, that it is common that the approval process through DAS is, is actually a little smoother than going through the formal legislative process through the Connecticut General Assembly. Okay, and those applications can be submitted monthly. So at any point, we could submit them. So much like the, um, like, much like the requirements for the HVAC grant that we just received, it requires like us to do certain things. And this is where like it takes some time to do the work and it's not something that you can just, you know, contact the vendor, go out to bid and put it up. The district would have to great, uh, create what's called educational specifications, um, which we have done. They would have to be approved by the Board of Ed. Um, they would also have to, I believe they get, I'm not sure if they get approved by the, the selectmen and the Board of Directors. There's a series of resolutions that have to be passed. Um, I think you guys probably remember that from the HVAC grant. And I actually linked in here the, the resolutions that, that would have to be applied. And then, um, and then you have to have the proof of local authorized funding. So you have to have a pass referendum that would show that the community has authorized the, the expedite, expedition of these funds for this particular pro- process. So that's kind of the backup prior to actually applying for the grant. Um, so that, that is, um, now, the, the, this is just some more information about what's, what's responsible, that we're responsible for, that we would need to provide in the application process. Um, there's a bunch of forms and applications, um, and we would have to have like architectural drawings of the roof sketch, um, that's consistent with our red specs to, to show that, that, um, that the project and the replacement of the work that is to be done. And I actually think it's good because there's a lot of samples, um, that they give you to, to show you like what the requirements are. The one caveat is that, so, um, again, this is just some of the authorization that this is states. And, um, that shows that roof replacement is considered in, in a, uh, um, a reimbursable, um, uh, project and in terms of roof replacement. The one thing that I will say, and these are some example forms that you can click on. I assume everybody has electro copy version of this, Mary?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes. So that you can click on these links and it has all of the, the different components that we need to kind of put together the package for the, the project itself. Um, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time with that. The one thing I did want to say, especially when we talk about the high school, uh, roof, is that when you're applying for, um, new, uh, roofs or even any type of construction product under school construction, it has to be over twenty years. And so at Bethel High School, interesting thing, um, and Tyler will talk more about it when he gets to his little section. Um, the section over the gym, which is the, the kind of the new addition that was placed when Bethel High School was renovated. And the, um, the CEO for that was twenty.
The twenty, two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine. So that, that portion of the high school roof actually does not meet the criteria of the twenty, uh, uh, the, the twenty years. And so it would not be eligible for replacement. And Tyler will talk about that. It's not, that's not, that's not one of the areas that we're highly concerned about. Um, it, it's got a little bit of lifespan next to it, but that's not an area that would be eligible under the full reimbursement rate. Go ahead, Nick.
We know forty-seven point eight six on the older roof. What would be for the fifteen to twenty-year roof percentage of reimbursement?
It's a percentage, yeah, they prorate it. So if it's fifteen years old, they would take fifteen and divide that by twenty, which will give you three quarters and multiply the reimbursement rate.
What is the number? So you're gonna ask me to do that?
We didn't know when the roof was put on versus when the CEO came.
Like thirty-six percent. So the warranty started in two thousand.
Approximately thirty-six.
The CEO was two thousand and nine. The State Department has it listed as twenty seventeen, because that's when we apparently closed out the project. Jen and I are working on getting that updated with the state. I'm not sure if they're gonna go from two thousand and eight with the warranty or the two thousand and nine of the CEO. But we should.
The twenty seventeen day is the audit date, right, Brad? And that's the difference. It was that, that, that's because they didn't have anything else. That's when they're going off of. That's when they closed the project, not when the actual high school was completed. Um, so go ahead.
Uh, but it would change the percentage of reimbursement.
Right. So we decided to do the whole high school roof now. A portion of it, a good portion of it, most of it would be at the forty-seven point whatever percent. Then square footage over the gym, which is not necessarily an end of its lifespan, would be at that thirty-six percent. So.
How many square is it, Tyler, over the gym?
That's why I was just looking to see if this latest one had it. It's, it's like thirty thousand square feet approximately.
Would it be a third of the, of the school? I mean, if you had an estimate?
It's a little less than a third.
Do you think that's close?
I would agree.
Yeah. So, um, so we, we talked about, and when, when Nick, Jen, and Scott and I met with, with some of our, our central office team, we talked about a lot of things. We talked about should we, should, because we also have issues at Berry School. And, uh, we have subsequent issues at the middle school. The middle school, let me start at the end. The middle schools, um, was finished in like the mid nineties, right? It's going, it's getting close to the thirty-year mark.
I, I believe it was started in ninety-six.
Yeah. And I believe they replaced that roof more than once at the middle school.
The first one failed, the main factor, the defect.
Um, so the, Tyler will talk about the middle schools, uh, parts of the roof are in better shape than other parts. Um, but the bigger question there is, is, because we have a lot of HVAC issues at the middle school also. Is, is it better to, to kick the can down the road a little bit and address it more comprehensively? Or is it, should we combine into these projects? Should they be separate? I mean, that's really a question for, for the town in terms of like how you want to approach the project, how much debt you want, the debt and bonding you want to do to support these projects. So there's, there's lots of question marks. We feel that our biggest priority, we, from the administration field, that Bethel High School is the biggest priority right now. Um, definitely the, I think the highest need. And Tyler will kind of go into that, uh, next. I think you're next. Any questions about the state process before I turn it over?
Just answer one question.
Yes.
Uh, the roofs have been on the capital plan since, uh, fiscal year eighteen ninety.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Going out there for a while.
Yeah.
If I, if I can add, just, we talked about, um, what we should do. Should do all three schools at one time and, um, and I think Brad came up with it. If, if we say, okay, we're gonna drop ninety thousand square feet or whatever with all the roofs, you're gonna have less contractors able to bid on projects like that and scare maybe qualified contractors. And Brad had said if we did one at a time, then it would get more bids and, and maybe, you know, lower the price.
Well, why can't you just put them out at separate bids? Because, you know, one contractor might feel comfortable taking on the middle school and another one might look at the high school and say, I don't want to get involved with all those rooftop units.
Well, let's look at the problem before we get to that.
So, everything that I've, I've shown here is in the packets. This is just a, a quick summary of the main issues we're seeing. So here I highlighted the, the main roof in yellow and the gym roof is in green. You can see, and the square footage is, uh, all right, lift it up. The gym is twenty-three thousand, three hundred. Again, the state currently says that gym roof won't be eligible till twenty thirty-seven, but we expect that to be in twenty twenty-nine, maybe twenty twenty-eight. The gym roof is, is a rubber membrane roof. It's in good shape right now. It has life left in it. But by the time we get the ball rolling and we're looking at that twenty-six, twenty-seven, it might make more sense to do the whole thing, have a roof across the entirety of the high school at same age. Because we're gonna be pretty close to the end of the warranty, uh, on, on that gym roof. Just food for thought. In its current condition though, the gym roof is not a problem. Uh, both our roof and contractor and the, the vendor that I brought out for this survey, who is a roofing manufacturer, not a contractor. Uh, independent, we've never worked with them. They have no stake in this, other than they're, they're hoping that they can write themselves into the, the bid eventually for the product. They have both said that the roof over the gym is in good shape right now. The original report actually excluded the gym roof entirely because it's in good shape. But we will be right, right at the end of the warranty on it by the time we get the ball rolling for the high school. Again, these photos and these descriptions are right out of the report, but these are, this is a basically a, a quick summary of what we're seeing. So the top left, top right, and bottom left are the main roof. It's a asphalt membrane roof. And we're just seeing a lot of, uh, surface delamination. All the mineral is gone, which exposes the asphalt. The asphalt evaporates over time. The surface starts to crack. That's where the leaks occur. Um, we're also seeing a lot of bubbling and blistering, mostly at the joints, which is actually the most, uh, difficult area to, to have a blister. Uh, they will pressurize in the summer from the heat, causing the blister to expand. And when it's at a joint, that's when it breaks open. And again, we have, uh, we're also seeing a lot of open conditions at all of, basically all of the roof penetrations on the main, um, portion of the roof. Uh, the bottom right is a, an overview of the roof above the gym. As noted, it is in much better condition, but the roof, uh, vendor that I brought out for the survey did make note of, and this was new to me, um, but I did a little research to, to see if it holds true across the industry. And it's probably difficult to see here, but in your packets, you can see round circles all over that rubber roof. Those are the fasteners that hold the insulation down. That's how I've seen almost every rubber roof that I've ever seen. You can see those. It's not best practice to do that though. Uh, you get thermal conduction through the, the fasteners and they can actually back out over time and then cause punctures through from below. Uh, it's not something I've experienced a lot, but this manufacturer said it from my research on the internet. It, it seems to be uh, a known issue if you don't put another layer of insulation above those fasteners and our roofing contractor actually said the same. Not trying to be doomsday here, just trying to give everybody a whole picture of what we have. We move on to Frank Berry, which we are considering as well as the roof and contractor to be the second, uh, priority. We again have two different roof types. For Berry, the entire roof is the same age, but we have, uh, the, the same low pitch roof for the majority of the school, fifty thousand, five hundred and five square feet. Uh, the other twelve thousand is a standing seam metal roof. That roof has a forty-year lifespan. Uh, we are approximately, uh, twenty-seven into it. That has a forty-year warranty lifespan. Uh, we're approximately twenty-seven into it. This roof and contractor, uh, manufacturer, sorry, indicated that the metal roof is in very good condition. They do recommend that we address a few damaged areas and do a little bit of touch-up paint in the, the roof project when we move forward, but their recommendation is that we don't look to replace that roof at that time. Similar layout, the top left, top right, and bottom left are the main asphalt roof. Showing the, uh, very similar issues as we have on the high school roof, blistering, broken seams. And, uh, top left just kind of gives an overview to show how many patches we've made, uh, over the years. So every one of, of these is a patch that was to address a blister or a leak. Um, so there are a substantial number of current repairs. Some of them need further repairs. But the metal roof is overall in very good condition. They did highlight the, as I mentioned, that there are some repairs we should make when we do a roof replacement on the, on Berry. Or ideally before that, if we can find the funding. But it's very minor. It's just addressing some small flashing, some small dents in some roof, uh, some ridge cap. And their recommendation was that we address some peeling paint when we go to replace the main roof. And then for the middle school, uh, it's a similar story where we have two different types of roof. In yellow, we have pitched roof, which is an architectural asphalt shingle. And then in green, we have a flat, uh, it's actually a different membrane, but it's a flat. I believe it's a TPM membrane. It's a plastic coated rubber essentially. Similar to the high school, the flat roof is in good shape right now. But we would be approaching the end of the warranty's life when we got to the point, the predicted point for roof replacement on the middle school, where we're kind of assuming twenty-six, twenty-seven would be the absolute best case, but we're probably a little further down the road for the middle school. Both my, my own, uh, analysis, assessment of the roof as well as the roofing manufacturer's assessment was that the priority should be the high school, then Berry, then middle school. And I stuck with the same layout of, so on the top left, you can just see some orange shingles. You can see on the leading edge that there's discoloration. That is all the surface of the, the shingle has deteriorated. On, on these shingles in particular, the asphalt actually has evaporated and that silver is the backing of those shingles. On the top right is just an illustration of just how much mineral loss off the face of those pitched, uh, asphalt shingles. We are seeing that as a pretty, uh, common sight on the flat roof portions of the middle school, wherever they are below pitched roof. Uh, the bottom left is just illustrating, again, it's a little bit harder to see, but how, how many cracked shingles we have. And that there's some algae growth on that roof. Algae growth on an asphalt shingle is an indicator that the shingle is starting to deteriorate. Um, and then on bottom right is one of the only highlights the manufacturer had of an issue on the low pitched roof. That's just an area where we have some pooling. It means the, uh, insulation that is under that membrane wasn't adequately pitched to direct all the water to the drain. Anytime you have pooling, you just have potential, a greater potential for leaks because you have standing water. In general though, that is one of, I think, three, uh, photos you'll see in your packet of an issue on the membrane roof. Other than that, vendor said that it is in good shape. It should be the lowest of our priorities. Are there any questions?
What type of roofing product is it? Was it manufactured?
On the flat roof, I'm not sure. I don't think that was firestone. The, the high school rubber roof is firestone. Uh, the flat pitch, I'm not sure because I know it, it was replaced as Nick mentioned. The original, uh, flat roof, I guess, cracked and failed like a year after installation.
Couple of years after.
I haven't found the document on. We haven't gone down that road yet, so.
But you're working with a manufacturer. So what do they sell? Obviously that wants to write the spec.
They, they sell all of these different membranes. Their recommendation for school roofs is an asphalt, for low pitch school roofs is an asphalt. They, they indicated that the membrane roofs don't hold up over time as well as the asphalt. But that was just one manufacturer, one conversation. We haven't got into building specs yet. Uh, we just wanted to present the current, what is, to give everybody a little bit of information so that we can all discuss steps forward.
And you mentioned the thermal break with the screw, um, and the, the, the manufacturer's recommending a gypsum product, obviously to, to lay to cover the screws. But that, is that in the numbers that have been floating around or is that something he would like to see added?
So the numbers that are in the packet did not get into specifics of any material or, or, Nick, we spoke earlier about removing of abandoned penetrations. We didn't get into any specifics in that. They gave me ballpark, but in their words, comfortable numbers, understanding that this is gonna be a couple of years before we get off, uh, get the show on the rug with, with getting it replaced. And they said the numbers they felt would give us room for options picking the materials.
And that's for anything abandoned on the roof because we want to clean it. But talking about the, the gypsum, you, you added right at the beginning that they, they would like to put another layer to cover those screws?
Well, that, that's not something that can be done to the existing roof.
No, 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 but we're talking about the pricing.
But yes, the pricing, so the, this manufacturer priced it so that they're, they would be comfortable honoring. If we went with their product, they, they offer a range of product and a range of warranty. But those numbers gave us the flexibility to choose within their range of products up to a forty-year warranty. Well, so.
Let's see. But the manufacturer is only gonna let you use certain contractors to honor that warranty. Roofer A can't say, hey, it's firestone. I'm gonna buy your product and install it unless he's a certified. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page here is that we understand that only certain contractors, you know, that, uh, whoever the company is you got is certified for them can get on the job.
Yeah, so one, one hundred percent correct. We did not go down the road of picking any materials, picking what the roots would be, or even suggesting that this is the, the con, uh, the manufacturer we would like to go with.
Which is one of the budget numbers.
Well, how do you come up with a budget number if you didn't pick the product?
He, he gave us a, a, a comfortable number to.
A roundabout.
Yeah.
So.
And, and am I wrong? And I don't know if this helps enter question, but this, the, what this involves is actually stripping it to the deck, correct?
Yes.
And all the insulation.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if that affects the question.
It's hard, the, the screws are showing through the rub, the, the rubber roof. And he had mentioned that the manufacturer says, hey, I don't like that. We have a fix. And it's something else that goes on top of the screws. It's like opposite gypsum board. And I just asked, did they put that in this number? Because we're talking about a big number.
Yeah. Again, we didn't get into any.
So he just gave you like a middle range roof and, and we're going on this number, but we didn't pick a roof yet.
Correct. Or it's really for conversation at this point.
But, but Nick, just a question. That would, that would assume that you would go back to this rubber.
That, that's a new style roof. It will be a glued-on roof at some point. It's either firestone or the other one, the, the white one here, the plastic, whatever the actual, I didn't think it was TMU, yeah.
Um, could you go to that next slide that you were, or?
The middle school.
Yeah. What, no, we, yeah, you talked about the mineral, mineral loss.
Yeah, where it's coming from.
Yeah, so I'm not a roofer, obviously. Well, not obviously, actually.
We know that.
So I'm just wondering, as part of a warranty, like when you're saying things have built up near the drains, there's bad pitch, whatever. Are, is there, what's a maintenance schedule? Because I don't even, we haven't talked about that and I don't understand how that works.
So, so this built-up mineral is from the asphalt pitch shingles?
No, I, I know, I have a, wouldn't that, wouldn't?
Okay, sorry. I'm, I'm, I think I'm getting to.
Okay.
Cleaning, cleanup of this so it doesn't block the drains is part of our current maintenance. That product can never go back on the shingle. Once it comes off, that's it. It's done. So if, if we get cleaned up and get thrown out. But it was not, it was intentionally not cleaned up before this photo so that it could be illustrated.
I understand, so and the same thing with um the pounding water, is that is that some kind of divot that's that kind of.
Overtime insulation.
And there's nothing that.
I mean, there's there are things we could do, but it would be invasive and it would probably lead to more headache than than it would fix. You'd cut, you could cut the roof up, peel it back and fix the insulation. But then you're cutting into a roof that's not necessarily leaking in order to try and fix drainage.
How often is it checked, like for the roofs checked in general with your maintenance?
Twice a year.
Thank you.
I mean, two two times a year from our our maintenance vendor. Myself and the custodians on the are on the roof far more often than that.
Okay, thanks.
And Jen, you want to talk about the last part of what the preliminary numbers are?
So these are the preliminary numbers that haven't mentioned was provided to us. So I broke the high school into two parts. Uh the first part is associated with the main roof that we know is eligible reimbursement. And the cost estimate number that we're working with here is a little more than four point one million dollars. Uh the second part down here is for the high school gym edition, uh which is almost one point four million dollars. And this here I do sort of a worst case scenario, we did not get any reimbursement. And if the town decided to go forward and pay for that whole thing uh without getting a reimbursement there. Um that's that's what's in here. Uh we anticipate the reimbursement rate at forty seven point eighty six percent. As Dr. Carver said, it went up a little bit, so uh very close to half, not quite half. Um so in this column, it adds up the cost estimates for doing the work. Um the reimbursement we would anticipate and then the town portion. Um and then we have Berry School, it's paid about three point one million dollars and the middle school at six million dollars. And the middle school is choosing doing both types of work, whole thing of the middle school. I'd say the middle school, because we haven't had a school construction grant related to this um in a a long time. It is completely eligible for reimbursement now, but it is in the best shape compared to the other two roofs, so it's not at the top of our list.
And I just wanted to say too, like, I know at times, like, the building committee has wanted to have, like, an owner's rep. You know, to represent the town, just be aware of these numbers don't reflect that. Um I I know that you, the guy said Tyler emailed him and they said, oh, no, it's all inclusive, I don't believe it. Um so I just want to be cautious about that, that there might be some additional expenses if we decide to get an owner's rep. Or um additional engineering cost that to to draw out the 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 sketching for the projects or things like that. So I I this is what the roof manufacturer has said are the preliminary estimates for that. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
And Brian, that is.
This 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 estimate of four million just for the the main roof came from the supplier.
That's correct.
Because they're like that almost seven thousand dollars a square. You know, roofs are figured by square, right? I mean, you're just going to figure out the square and that that comes out.
Yeah.
So the numbers, you're almost seven thousand a square.
This this manufacturer for this conversation would not go into specifics of how they work their numbers. They wouldn't go into specifics of what materials we're looking at. They wouldn't go into specifics.
We would actually have to do a bid spend formally to get all that in.
So everybody's bidding on apples for apples.
Yeah, right. If we if we did want to move forward, I also would recommend that we uh just like we did for the HVAC projects. Where we we brought in an engineering firm and an owner's rep. And they they looked at what the costs, the potential costs were to come to a conclusion to do that. So this is just like we said.
Is there any contingency money in there?
Oh, I I would assume that there is.
So so. Before I answer that, to echo Dr. Carver's concern, because the the manufacturer wouldn't give us specifics. We're we're tentative to accept the answer, but the answer I received was that this was a comfortable number. With the assumption that it would be a a few, wouldn't, they wouldn't tell us what period they were looking at, but a few years out. And that it was a turnkey number, that it would include owner's rep, architect, engineer.
I don't believe that.
So if they want to bid on it at some point, they can't be involved anymore in specs.
No.
Right, they're the manufacturer anyway, they they don't lay roofs.
I mean, I would I would assume that we would have to do like bigger HVAC and everything else. We would have to look to like a contract with an owner's rep and and an engineering firm to get, or an architectural firm, I'm not sure what in this service. To get the best uh dollar amount. But I I do think that they're pretty good numbers to give you a sense of what it could be.
A lot of money.
Yeah, you look at these numbers on the referendum.
No, no.
The problem with that is you can't get, we have, try to have an engineer, somebody come out and look at it. You're not going to really get firm numbers until you bid it, and you're not going to be able to bid it until well after the referendum.
That's what happened with the HVAC project, I think Nick and I had that argument this morning.
A spirited conversation, spirited conversation, right?
I didn't get louder at all.
But anyways, go ahead.
Yes.
No, it that's what sucks about it.
The the way we have to work in this this valley is backwards.
Yeah, couldn't you go structure the referendum as just construction projects related to the improvement? That way the people are bidding, don't know, you could be bidding more than one project. Or does it have to be specific? That that way, we're just saying, look, construction projects.
So the issue is that it's going to be required that we have the approval for the project.
Right.
Get the reimbursement.
I just want to check, if the state says it's fine that you were referendum, construction project to improve that whole schools.
Oh, no, 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 I think that absolutely is pretty. It has to say that whole high school uh roof project.
With a doctor, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So you could put roofs though, I mean, did you put roofs?
So but the problem, Brian, is.
Every school is a different project.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. You can't do multiple schools on the same project with the state.
Right, like right now, it's VHS HVAC project. And and Anna Rockwell was different than, even though the town has a referendum for both. And and the state, they were considered separate projects. So um so it it's just what it is.
You probably could, even if you were doing two at the same time, you probably have to make them separate lines on the referendum.
Yeah.
That's what we did, that's what we did. We did it, it was a total amount, not to exceed sixty five million or whatever for 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 the school renovations. And then um but they were listed for Anna Rockwell and John R G Johnson's school. And then the state, we, they were two separate things, they accepted one referendum, but the projects were lifted separately.
And just because this just came up on the side, we put the cost estimate in total there prior to reimbursement. So the town is actually voting on like the fourteen million or like, you know.
Yeah, whatever.
The bigger amount, pre reimbursement, so it always looks like, oh my god.
I don't know if we could do it in the referendum, but we did have a conversation at one point. It was assuming the state approved the project.
Right, and and I I would recommend that you do the same, so that the referendum was actually written, it was contingent upon receiving the grant.
So I, because you said the manufacturer, the roof manufacturer, they wouldn't commit to anything and then they, and you're not sure whether the. Uh owner's rep is included, etc. And then these are numbers that he thought were comfortable, but now I have no faith in those numbers at all.
He's really comfortable.
Yeah, he's so comfortable, you know.
What I think we would have to do next, but it would require some action on your part. Money, yeah, is we would have to hire, uh I I think we should personally do it like we did the other projects, like an owner's rep. And uh and some type of firm that could come up with numbers compared to what this guy said.
To get a set of drawings, you mean, so it can go out to bid.
Right, and 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 to, and it, yeah, and help with specs and and to write, um to see how close we are with this.
Is any of that reimbursable if we do that now to get?
I believe it is, I've read. All the pre work for the school projects were reimbursable.
I think you have to have approved project first, though. I think, isn't that one of the things that it's all, I think you said that earlier today, it's got to be an approved project at the state. Before they'll, before you spend any money, before they'll reimburse any of the pre work. So then we have to do referendum, get it on the list and then do the engineering stuff over there.
Yeah, but we did the engineering study before the HVAC project. Whether or not that was reimbursed.
We're not getting reimbursed.
Agreed.
Right?
We will for the construction side of it.
Construction, yeah, not the engineering.
We use that grant money to do that. And and I can have Jen, we can love her some, maybe ask a couple of people to like how much the study would be. I remember we did the S T P estimate for the um for the the HVAC. It was about ten thousand dollars for for the owner's rep side to do the work and and then Colerona had already done that.
They did a lot of work from you guys.
Right, so we can get that going, but we would obviously have have to have authorization for the funding to do that. I mean, do you want us to contact some firms to try to get at least that next step?
I think you should get a number, a bid from a couple of firms to see where they're at, I mean, the work has to be done.
Well, we can't really go on.
Well, I think I think the first step would be to 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 know what our.
I'm getting bids before you have, or does the charter prevent that?
I think it would be under fifty thousand.
So, yeah, so if you want to get pricing on stuff for on new fifty grand.
Anything over, you have to have a reference to our charter, you have to have it approved before you can get bids.
No, so you can get, we can get bids on whatever we want.
Then why wouldn't you get some bids from different roofing contractors to find out?
Do the whole project? But and and if we didn't have funds, I wouldn't bid on that.
Well, no, I think you might have some guys who'd be interested in coming out and looking at it because, and again, I'm not. But I mean, they're telling you seven thousand a square.
I don't know that, Brian, I I talked to some of my colleagues that have recently done it, Watertown. I don't think it's too far off and.
You got prevailing wage.
Right. I don't think it's too far off.
And you're ripping it to the deck, right? It's all, we're not just re-roofing something else.
So um but either way, we would still, um even if we went out to bid, we would have to have an engineer give us specs.
You gotta have, you gotta have a spreadsheet.
So.
Or you're just shooting a dart gun at the wall and if we're wrong, we have to go back out to referendum.
No, what I what I guess what I was suggesting is that if if we had authorization to to hire a a. Would it be an engineer or or?
An engineer is going to do a spec on it, the architect's not coming to.
Right, but to get a better cost and do a cost estimate and then do an owner's rep cost estimate. I mean, we could try to get information about how much that would cost.
What would Cole and Roland charge to do something like that? Are we talking twenty, thirty thousand dollars, ten thousand?
I haven't asked them.
Yeah, we haven't asked them. But yes, they possibly could and then and then in this state, they've certainly been on our roofs many times, so they're familiar with it. Um we got, then we could get cost, better cost estimate to bring back to you.
There's nothing wrong with asking vendors to come out and give you rough estimates and how the roofing.
Contract.
We did, and we purposely didn't use our existing roof.
Just have a conversation with the contractor, you know. I mean, you can call Bill Hall and tomorrow and ask him, he's done a million roofs, he's done Mercedes, he's done all Hall.
Rip it.
Give me a ballpark, you know. Obviously, it can vary, but you know, you have a lot of rooftop units, a lot of penetrations in that roof, you know, it could all vary, but. At least we would know before we do anything, this is in the realm of, if he says, yeah, it's five, six thousand a square, then you know. That's right, I mean, we've ripped and installed them, you know, smaller buildings, you know, probably, you know, smaller than that. But it'd just be nice to know and just, you know, and you got to tell them it's prevailing wage because that's that that that. Huge cost and labor.
Is that, was that precluded, same contract?
No, so if the contractor comes out and gives you the bid specs. And he don't want that.
That's part of the reason why we want to.
Right, that's why.
But that's why you want the engineer, but if we wanted to get to the point that we wanted to get an updated number to go out to referendum for. There's nothing precluding our, precluding us from going out, having a couple of vendors that's done school projects before and go. We're either doing it in summer twenty six, summer twenty seven. What do you think the estimate would be? And they're probably not going to give you detail because then it becomes F liable, they don't want to share that kind of information. That's why this guy is being so cagey with his numbers because it's F liable. Um but if somebody came out and gave you a ballpark, now we're going to go, yeah, that's a good number to go out to referendum with. And then we'd have to add on the owner's rep and engineer contingency number.
Right, so if this guy's a manufacturer, you mean, if you get someone, I mean.
You probably want somebody that's.
Done a lot of roof projects.
I'm yes, I'm sure he has, he's also sold a lot of roofs and that's what he wants to get, so.
How much do you, do you charge for the inspection? People aren't going to come out and look at something that guaranteed money.
But he wants to write the specs. But that doesn't mean that the contractor would charge us seven thousand a square. He just has to use that guy's product.
Maybe that's why it's comfortable.
That's where my question was going, probably, the the comfortable number, do you assume that number would go down once people start bidding on it? I mean, is that a comfortable number, like, so if we all swallow that, it would be less than that?
Visually spoke with the roofing contract of the state. And he cautioned me saying that he's seen multiple school districts apply for a roofing project. They do the referendum, they go out to bid and then the bids are high and they have, they've had to go to referendum a second time to get the funding off.
So to my question, do you think that that would pass a referendum and a budget, I'm I'm sorry, an estimate?
I I I'm unable to answer your question directly because we don't have specs, so I don't even know what he based his number on. He led me to believe he is comfortable with us using this number as referendum, but that doesn't really mean a whole lot.
We're going to have to hire that anyway, so it's kind of a moot point.
What do we call those special referendums? We don't, we all know we don't want to see that, right? We could try to get, we could try to hire an engineering firm or someone to get us a, not only the better specs, but also the um the ca- the cost estimation, right? And then uh have an owner's rep or somebody else.
Look at it.
Look at it to make sure that they think they're in the right ballpark compared to what's here, right? And and then look at, um I mean, I'm sure we can get that done in the next month or two. Um for potentially for April. When I tell you that April, you're you're talking about not doing the project for like another year or two. It's not like it's going to happen tomorrow in terms of the actual funding of the project or the bonding of the project, correct? Um or you you know, you have a municipal election in November, could that, could it be in November? We talked about that earlier.
I I think it can, but it might be smarter to do with the budget.
Right, yeah.
And and it also gets it early on in the years, we have time.
So does it make sense for us to get some proposals?
I would recommend Jen talking to a couple of engineer firms, seeing what the number is, come back to us quick. And get it on our agenda, we'll throw some money at it because I feel comfortable knowing.
Putting money at it.
Because I think you could say that there's a consensus that we need to do it.
Right.
Since we need to be more comfortable, we need to be as comfortable as that guy.
We don't want to be in a situation where where.
But would it make sense to do Berry and the high school at the same time? Because right now, you know, the funding's there at forty seven percent. None of us have a crystal ball on what it's going to be like two years from now, we might think, oh, yeah, we're going to plug it in this year. And in two years, we're all set and the funding's gone. Where the funding's at twenty percent now, or thirty percent. I mean, no one knows when the next COVID is going to hit or when the next. I mean, it just seems like, you know, if they're going to reimburse you at fifty percent. To go eight million, you're looking at four million dollars, it's almost, you know, to to at least get Berry and the high school to the point where we need them. Rather than, you know, saying we're going to just spread these out, you know.
I mean, honestly, that's.
I think I want to have a greater conversation about our debt service.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, um to get reimbursement for Berry, we would need to wait until twenty twenty eight to apply if we want to still reimburse.
But I think once we get it, like, we have the two buildings up and we looked at all the iterations of what would make best sense financially. And once you're doing a big project and you have everybody on site and you have all the materials there. And once you're doing a big project and you have everybody on site and you have all the materials there and all the machinery there, sometimes it's like penny wise, pound foolish kind of thing to not do the two at the same time if you're looking at things. So they they put down all the different plans, like if we just did this, if we just did this, if we included the gymnasium for the high school, like all those little pieces.
But the Berry school can't, we can't do it until twenty eight.
Well, no, it's.
It's pro-rated. We'd still get reimbursement. We could put out that what if we do it and we only get back?
Thirty six.
Thirty six percent, you know.
Down to thirty six percent.
Yeah.
Forty seven.
Right.
On the positive side, I mean, the state has not reduced the rates of.
Yeah, the last five years.
You know, in fact, they went up. But but you're right, Brian.
Is the eligibility based on the submissions of the grant or the date of the project?
Well, that is a question we could ask. Like, if they said it's a longer base, like, apply and say, okay, we want to do that place for like this, and then the.
Well, I think the state considers them each separate. So we would have to apply for the high school. We'd apply for Berry or A and R, right? And the close. It is prorated based on how old the roof is. So if we surprise, you know, one year off, we're going to do it twenty twenty seven, we would get a higher reimbursement than that thirty six.
I would guess that's all right.
Well, I mean, that's a big conversation.
Yeah. I mean, too, if you did the school two or three years early, you just, away two or three years, it's just a lot of difference. I understand your point. If we thought the reimbursement was going away, altogether, you rushed to do it.
I mean, we could just say we could keep referring them for the next.
Well, in five years, and extend it even further. I mean, you're just saying, Brian.
Yeah.
What do you want to do? You know, you know, because you also have a big renovation coming down the road, and we all know that.
Yeah.
So, you know, does it make sense to bite the bullet and get it over with? So when you get to the next renovation?
I mean, the middle school down the.
Correct.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is, do you do both projects, get it out of the way? You know, I remember when Ridgefield, everyone said they were crazy, they did a hundred twenty million dollars in school improvements. Well, twenty years later, they love it because, you know, they're not building new schools. And they kind of, you know, I'm not suggesting bubbles, but a hundred twenty.
But everything goes bad at the same time, too. So it's nice to stagger some projects. They're not all in the same.
I mean, you're right. Honestly, we're experiencing that with technology, because we got all the urban money.
Right, you got hit all.
And now all of our technology is going to go at the same time. So I I can appreciate that.
So if you get three years out of a building and you're staggering.
Right. So here's what I hear, hear us say right now.
Melkred.
Just. Because I I want to. Because I I've had some miscommunication.
That's the Jedi mind.
Is what I hear saying is, we're going to get numbers for you about what it would cost to get some design specs. And for for some cost estimating for an owner's rep, so that you can make better decisions. And do you want us to do that for both schools or to get that number or just do the high school?
I was thinking just high school, because you have to apply separately for every reimbursement anyway, right?
Yeah, the only difference is you'd have the information.
I would say that the caveat there is, if we're going to put it up for referendum, do we want to be staggering referendums over the next several years?
You have a budget every year.
This is, that's an educational thing that the first level is going to have to do.
No, I, I, you know, it's it's a process. We all have to support our schools and our buildings, and we have to sell the story. We all have to.
Would it make sense just in terms of the engineering to do them both at the same time? Kind of economy and scale, the guy's coming out, he's looking at the high school. He's probably going to use the same product. He's probably going to use the same specs. You know, rather than having him reorganize everything and.
Yeah, that was Jay's point a few minutes ago.
You know, that way, he's kind of shovel ready for two years.
Maybe we get a better deal on this.
Yeah.
But the the way you show I had was, we were talking about doing the Berry school. My numbers, as a timber city, that's three hundred thousand dollars. I'd rather wait. Three hundred thousand dollars.
To get the full reimbursement.
To get full reimbursement. I wouldn't start the Berry project sooner, but getting the specs makes a ton of sense.
And and twenty eight will be here before you know it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be done.
Yeah, I mean, just three hundred thousand dollars is a lot right now.
That would pay for some extras.
I mean, it is going to be a tough, I'll give you all the preview, but Nick and uh, Dan, the preview, it's going to be a tough year. Like, our insurance is, rates are.
How many do you think you're going to have to lay on for now?
Stay on topic. Come on now. Make it easy.
Just an insurance, we actually, we're looking at our, really horrible year. Our insurance, our, we're out to bid right now. I'll say that out loud to see if we can, uh, recruit any savings, but it's it's the worst I've seen since I've been in Bethel. Uh, and I know the town's got issues. So we have to consider all these factors, like when we're making decisions and, um, uh, but but definitely, I think it's a good next step. So here's what I'm hearing. We're gonna get.
Try it again.
Back for Berry and the high school.
Will they give you a cost on, will they tell you how much you're going to charge you to do the specs?
Yes, that's what.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna get.
We would get a bid proposal and send it to you guys.
Yes, that's perfect.
Right. Does that work?
Yes. Can you do my Tuesday?
No.
Just checking.
But I do, I don't, I feel like we have time. I mean, that's why we wanted to.
But if we want to get it on April referendum instead of pushing it down, we do need to get it down to April.
No, a hundred percent.
A vote, right.
A hundred percent, uh, but.
I want the most people to be voting on it. I don't want to have a special election.
It's not, it's a tense, I'm using the word tense, but I am not in construction, but it's not as involved in detail as like the HVAC specs, right?
It shouldn't be.
It's a little bit more straightforward.
It's a little different.
I don't think it's as big of a deal, but.
I mean, the the unknown factor that is the biggest piece of it is structural integrity.
Right.
It's an unknown unless we pay some money, a lot of money to go same line down to deck to validate that that is in good shape. They don't know until we get into the project, but other than that, it's material.
Are you, are you concerned of rotted decking or where the penetrations are going to be removed, the structural sound?
I'm more concerned about potential eroded decking based on the volume.
Large areas.
But I.
Yeah, but we can, you can, we discussed it. You have to go past that.
And they go back to that.
Price for the room.
The puddle in the drain.
Yeah, that could be a piece of rusted deck and the insulation blown. That's how it's.
So we're all clear.
We're all clear. We're spending twenty five hundred dollars. On on the public comment. So, uh, with that, with that, I'll move along. Uh, do you have correspondence? Any correspondence?
None.
Any public comment? Motion to adjourn, yeah. So I guess we have to do this each one, right?
Yeah.
So you, uh, so, uh, let's hear the voter selectmen. Are there any motion to adjourn? Second, uh, favor, aye, we stand adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
You want a motion to adjourn?
You got a motion?
Second.
Second.
Uh, favor please.
Aye.
Thank you, and happy New Year's, everybody.